Hi Susan. I think we'll spread out again. I'll move down. Or, yeah, I'll move down. Hi, good evening and welcome to the January 5th, 2022 Yarmouth Planning Board meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. As this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and remote participation, I'll read the following statement into the record. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, in pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, January 5th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. Public is welcome to attend either in person or via the ultimate remote access provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website at www.yarmouth.m-a.us, under the Agendas and Minutes tab, selecting Planning Board. I will begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin?
Present.
Liz Hartzgrove?
Present.
Susan Britta? Will Rubenstein?
Present.
Chris Vincent?
Here.
Joanne Crowley here. Seeing that we have a quorum present, I can now call the meeting to order. For remote public participation during the public comment period for public hearings or at the discretion of the Chair for public meetings, the Chair will invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use the Raise Hand button to notify us. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized by the Chair to participate. Once recognized, audience members are pleased asked to identify themselves, by first and last name and affiliation for the public record. So please, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you, and welcome to, members of the public who are with us this evening and those who may be joining us remotely. We have three Planning Board members who are joining us remotely this evening. And as best I can, I'll try to keep track of who's raising hands and who's not. And I will hope that Kathy Williams can help me keep an eye on that as well. On tonight's agenda, we have a couple of items. The first up is a discussion on potential zoning amendments. We began this discussion on one potential item last meeting, which was last week. And we're going to have another presentation this evening with regard to temporary seasonal employee housing. This evening, we have joining us Mary Vilbon from the Chamber of Commerce, Jamie Viera, Chair of the Yarmouth Planning, Yarmouth Community Partnership. Is Mark here? Mark is here, Mark Grilles, our Building Commissioner. Anyone else, Mary, that's part of that group? Oh, I'm sorry, Jack, I didn't see you back there. Jack Hines, who's a well-known hotel owner, employer, important member of the public here. And I didn't know if Mary Wagon was coming tonight. No, I guess not. Okay. Anyone else I need to recognize at this point that who's going to be participating, Mary? Okay, thank you. So let's, let's get started on this. In a letter dated December 22nd, 2021, received by the Planning Board, you asked us to consider and, sent by the Yarmouth Community Partnership by Mr. Viera, to consider and deliberate an amendment to our zoning bylaw, Section 405.5, seasonal employee housing at hotels, motels. In our packets is a copy of the letter and a draft of proposed edits to this existing bylaw, I believe as crafted with the help of our town planner Kathy Williams. So we'd like to start. Mary, would you like to begin? Or would Mr. Viera, Jamie, would you like to begin presentation? However, you'd like to move forward on this, Mary? Yes, please, join us at the table. That would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought it might be helpful, just for a little clarification, of who the Yarmouth Community Partnership is.
It was one of my first questions, Mary.
Wonderful, wonderful. So probably about six months ago, the Board of Directors had a discussion because we were receiving lots of calls and people coming in and talking to the chamber, business leaders and residents that had concerns or just ideas of things that could be happening in town. So we decided to look at developing a new committee, which we decided to call the Yarmouth Community Partnership. We developed roles and responsibilities. And with your permission, I'd like to just outline some of those roles and responsibilities. One is to identify community initiatives that will improve the quality of life for our residents, to advocate for business-friendly policies in the town of Yarmouth, be a resource for our members and residents to bring the ideas that the Yarmouth Chamber may consider supporting, partner with members, nonprofits, civic organizations, the town of Yarmouth and other entities to achieve set goals, and to communicate and disseminate information to the town of Yarmouth, businesses, residents, and town officials. Once the committee was formed, what we did was we actually invited those residents that we had been in conversation with and business leaders. And we also invited some town leaders. And we are fortunate enough where our Assistant Town Administrator has been attending our meetings and has been extremely helpful and informative to work with him. So we do appreciate that. At our first meeting, everyone that attended, we prioritized issues that were important to us. And seasonal workforce housing came to the very top of the list. So that's what has brought us here today. The committee voted, and Jamie Viera from the Davenport Companies is the Chair of the committee and is really being, as you can imagine, the Davenport Companies has had much experience in this particular area. So he has been very helpful in the conversation as well.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
So Jamie, thank you for coming this evening. Jack, thank you both for coming. How would you, however you'd like to proceed with presenting what your proposal is, and then we'll open it up to discussion by members of the board.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jamie Viera, Vice President, Chief of Staff of the Davenport Companies. For those participating remotely, I'm feeling inclined to want to turn my head to see the screen, but I think you could see me facing forward here. It's a little strange in that regard. I don't mean to be disrespectful. I am looking forward so that I can make sure that everyone can hear me, I hope.
They can, they can actually see you, Jamie. Yeah, they can see you.
So as Mary indicated, we met as a committee and came to the conclusion that what we thought was a top priority was addressing seasonal employees here in the town of Yarmouth. As many of you are well aware, this has been a problem, not just the last few years, but has been a problem for a number of years. Gone are the days, back when I grew up in Dennis, where you could rent a house and four college kids would rent it, 10 would live in it. They would spend their days working at three or four different jobs, spend part of their money at the Compass Lounge, and summers went on. And that's how people got their help yearly in the summer, excuse me. Those days no longer happen. Number one, there's just seemingly not enough college students who want to come here or places for them to stay. The town of Yarmouth, and the town of Yarmouth is no different than any other town, has a population which just can't fit the number and need for seasonal workers that businesses demand. That is restaurants, hotels, landscapers, retail, you name it. There are folks who are retired or just aren't interested in taking those jobs. So there is a need for seasonal employees who are not principal residents of the town of Yarmouth. And whether they are J1 or H2B or college students or just folks looking to come to work on Cape Cod for the summer, the primary problem for businesses is where do they house? And so what we thought as a method to help as a short-term solution, because this is not the be-all and end-all that we're looking to propose here. There are bigger, longer solutions that the town can work through. But we thought we would try to solve a short-term problem by modifying an existing provision in the bylaw. The bylaw currently has a provision related to seasonal employees at motels and hotels, Section 404.5. 404.5, in general terms, permits a motel or hotel operator at present to dedicate, my word, 15% of the rooms on their property to house their employees. Now, there is annual restrictions. There is oversight that's in place already. It's just not a pro forma allowed. You have to get approval. You have to go through a process through the Building Commissioner at present to allow those 15% of your rooms to be utilized for your employees. But there's two problems that come from that. It does put a hotel and motel operator in the Hobson's Choice of deciding whether to take 15% of their rooms off-market and put their employees in them, or they then forego that revenue, or they basically can't hire the employee. So what came to us was, and that also doesn't solve the problem for the restaurant owner, the retail owner, et cetera. So if you're the motel owner, we came to reason, we said, why would it be such a problem? If that motel operator could decide to dedicate the same up to 15% of their rooms, but utilize them for other people's workers, maybe not their own, so that a restaurant could have a place to make an arrangement with a motel to house people. A landscaper could do that. Any other industry or business in town seasonally could go to a motel and ask if they can make an arrangement to put folks in those rooms. Now, it gives the motel operator the opportunity to make revenue on the room. If you have to decide to go an entire season and not rent out that room, that's a tough choice. But if you can negotiate an arrangement for a long-term period of time over the season, where you have sustained income coming in, that's a benefit for that motel operator. It produces tax revenue that the town otherwise doesn't get when the rooms come offline. And so this affords other businesses opportunities. Now, to be clear, it's not a 15% mandate. It doesn't mean that the hotel that does it has to do 15%. It doesn't mean any hotel has to do this at all. It's an option that gives the business community the opportunity to work with itself and others to be able to come up with a solution here. Now, what's the oversight? Well, the oversight's really not much different than it is presently. Now, technically, under the law, the Building Commissioner is a zoning enforcement officer. But what you can see that we've put in here is to add a little bit, if you have to provide the names and addresses of the folks that are going to be on your property. You have to provide oversight and you have to put in that information and get approval from the Building Commissioner. Now, there's also, I think, inherent self-policing that can be involved in this as well. If I'm the motel operator, if there are going to be people on premises, whether they are a paying guest or they are an employee of my own or someone else's, it behooves me to make sure they, lack of a better word, behave themselves because I have other paying guests on property. Similarly, if I'm the employer of someone who's housed at a motel, I don't want them to be misbehaving and get kicked out because if they get removed, I've lost an employee. So there is a check and balance here that has to operate between the person who operates the motel and the person who's putting their employee in that motel. And that's basically, we're really elevating form over substance in some respect to say, an employee who works for the motel can use that room up to 15%, but an employee who works at a restaurant can't. Is there really a functional difference between that person who's using that room? I would submit to you there isn't. So we are not opening Pandora's Box to allow 100% of the rooms in a motel to be utilized for purposes of employee housing. We are not creating year-round housing because it is constrained to seasonal restrictions placed inside the bylaw itself. Similarly, if there's a bad experience at a particular property, the Building Commissioner doesn't renew the request if it comes back the next year. So we're not creating something that is going to go on ad infinitum. If you don't do it right, you lose the opportunity to do it again going forward. So again, another part of the self-policing and municipal oversight is built into the bylaw here as well. I don't want to overstate too much more than what's there. I don't need to read the contents of the letter that I've got there. But I do want to point out one thing, and that is, because it's inherent seemingly and everything, is this is not COVID-driven. COVID's impact on this is the following. Because this problem's been here before. Where COVID has impacted employee housing would be in the limited instance of someone who previously may have rented their house out but has chosen now to use it themselves for the summer. But I would submit to you that that's a bigger impact on the rental of housing, whether it's for a week or for a month or for the winter, than it is on renting a house for employees. It'll have some impact. But the fact is, if someone chooses to live in their house now year-round, that means there's nobody's going to rent it for a week or a month or for the winter, and perhaps you can't house some employees there as well. So that's what I think is the limited impact that COVID is going to have or has had in the long-term on employee housing. This, we think, is a process that creates a short-term solution that's not manifestly that much different than what already exists, but opens up opportunities for other businesses to be able to try to solve the problem. Because if they can't, then we're going to be confronted with restaurants who have X number of weeks to make money, have to close on numbers of days because they don't have employees. Hotels that don't have enough staff to service their guests, so they get poor ratings and people decide they don't want to come to Yarmouth. They want to go to Dennis or Bronstable or someplace else. The cascading negative effect of not having employees will be felt, not only this summer, but years beyond that. And so this is a way to try to solve that problem without overhauling the entire bylaw. With that, I'll stop and turn over any comments Jack may have.
Thank you very much.
You're entirely welcome.
Thank you. Jack, Mr. Heinz?
You know, I think Jamie has pretty much covered it. You know, we all read in the newspaper about the demand for employees and places shutting down and not being able to open every day. And this is just, you know, the last couple of years, we did not have as many J1 visa students because they couldn't come because of COVID. And they'll be back hopefully this summer, but you know, that's just going to exasperate the problem further.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. I'd like to now open it up to questions from members of the Planning Board. And I'd like to start with, Will, do you, do you mind, do you mind starting with any questions you might have?
I do not mind. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't have questions at this point. I am generally in favor of the, the concept of collaboration, whether that's schools, town to town, or otherwise. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm intrigued and looking forward to hearing more comments from my fellow board members. Thank you.
Okay. Liz, may I go to you next?
Thank you. Um, so I have a question as to the logic or why are you proposing that the Building Commissioner be the one who issues the permit? I, I understand that it's for zoning and I understand all of that, but why is it? I mean, hotel license is issued, in theory, by the selectmen, and then a motel license is, in theory, issued by the Health Department on an annual basis. Then why are you adding this extra layer of the Building Commissioner for a separate permit? Can you elaborate for the, for me, please?
I think the Building Commissioner has a role in the process already. We're not adding anything on to the Building Commissioner's responsibilities or duties. That role already exists.
Well, reviewing, yes, but issuing permits, whole different thing as far as an annual license authority for permitting. So if I can hear from the Building Commissioner if he actually agrees with this or if he really feels that it should be tied in with the annual renewal of the license issued by the licensing authority and he just signs off on it, similar to any other type of annual renewal.
I'd like to recognize Mark Grilles, who's the Building Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Section 404.5.2 applicability. The Building Commissioner may approve through annual application and permit seasonal employee housing units at currently licensed motels and hotels in accordance with the provisions outlined herein. And then it goes on, doesn't, more sentencing, sentences. But basically, this is, has been going on. There was a time when we were requiring a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that just became a little bit too much for the ZBA. So we had changed this to allow the permit to come through my office. And essentially, we do the inspection during the time, during the annual inspection. However, the permit is issued through us so that we can recognize which rooms are being occupied by long-term staff members.
Thank you. I'm not opposed to it. It's just that if there is any streamlined opportunities to learn from in the future, I definitely encourage you to come back and so we can actually edit and amend any types of things that we're going to put our stamp of approval on. I think that there is some opportunity to streamline this where you don't have people going, bouncing around from department to department to make sure that they are in compliance with something that you could do in a one-stop-shop of licensing or the Health Department. Similar thing with 404.5.36. It talks about actually submitting, if I get this up correctly, shall designate an onsite proctor and you have to submit, if you're the one, the property owner, you have to submit the contact information with the Police Department and the Building Commissioner. I think it's a little much, in my opinion. I think if you just deal with the license authority or whoever you submit your annual license renewal paperwork with. I'm trying to think of expediting the process, not making it as hard. If you're telling me that you want to make this as easy as possible for, for businesses to get up and running and to just get their employees in housing, then let's streamline this a little bit. And I think that's a little redundant and actually asking the business owners a little extra that they don't need to do. We don't need to ask them. So let's make it easy for them and just slap it on the application for renewals and just put in who their onsite proctor is. And then the PD and the Building Commissioner can go to whatever form that is and look up that information if they need to do it. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Liz. Mark, did you want to say anything else? Okay, thank you. So we're looking to your comments, let's make it easier, faster, more streamlined, more efficient as, as best we can. Okay, yes, Mark, Building Commissioner, Mark Grilles?
Madam Chair, if, if the, we're not going to get a permit process through the Building Department or through the Building Commissioner, then there's no point in this being in the zoning bylaw whatsoever. So this is enforced by my office, not through the Health Department. There is an annual inspection process that takes place already. It's one, one piece of paper is all it really is. So I have streamlined these processes already.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Who's next? Mr. Goodwin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for not being there in person. Personal thanks to Jack and the Davenport Company. Jamie, you've got a long history with the Planning Board. You're both instrumental in helping us work through the two hotel-motel overlay zones. So thank you again for stepping forward and helping Yarmouth. On this one, Madam Chair to you, to Kathy. Kathy, did you get any feedback from the town of Dennis, who seemed to be one step ahead of us on this process?
I think in the town of Dennis, they're doing it more as a lodging facility. And I think what they've done so far was for one very specific business. So I think it is really taking a motel and converting it into lodging units. I think we've been a little hesitant to allow more than a certain percentage, like 15%. In order to, to do that, I know Province Town has looked at dormitories. I think we've had some hesitation with regard to concerns of our motel rooms just being converted to some type of dormitory style. So this is a way, I think, of, of allowing, in a limited situation, a certain number of rooms to be allowed for the seasonal employee housing.
Okay, no, it just, it was an interesting spin. Jamie, you, you made a couple of good bullet points on that. And I'm just thinking back to previous town meetings. It all comes down to the town vote and a two-thirds majority. But something does need to be done. I would like some feedback from Chief Frederiksen because I remember a couple instances of problems, but I don't think that would carry forth to today. But I would like some, some feedback from Chief Frederiksen. But so far, what I've heard makes sense. And I would be one to let the town vote on it and not try to stop it or block it. But go fight for it and see if the town will try to help out its own businesses. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chris Vincent?
Yeah, I, I like it. And I'm going to echo what Brad just said about getting Chief Frederiksen's opinion. I think the Police Department should be notified because Mark gets done at 5 o'clock if they need to. They can't talk to him, so they need to know who's going to be there as an onsite proctor. So I'm, I'm all for that, notifying the Police Department. It's very simple. And, but I'm curious to know what, what the chief thinks about it. And that, that would be it.
Susan Britta?
I have lots of questions. And maybe, maybe some of them should be directed first to Mary. Mary, how many motels are there along 28? Do we have an exact number of, because I know two of them just sold on 28, right by the Taste Depot face. So those two are gone. How many motels are we talking about?
I do not know the exact number. Jack, would you know it better?
I know in the HMOD, there's 35 properties.
Is that along 28?
Along 28.
So there'd be 35?
In the HMOD, one, yeah.
It's in the growth incentive zone. It's 35. I think there's a few other motels that weren't included in that. Some maybe, maybe have between 35 and 40.
And they've all asked for relief in this issue? Is that your understanding?
No, not at all.
Not at all? Okay. Like, well, like the Hampton Inn, the bigger ones, like the Hampton Inn and the COVID. So it's the, the smaller, they tend to be the, the medium-sized motels? Is that your understanding of?
Well, to be clear, we're not suggesting that this is being asked by any particular hotel at all.
Okay.
Our committee, through our experiences as operators and taking other retail folks and other business owners, thought this would be an option to kind of move the existing bylaw, as I explained, from just the constraints of your own employees to the expansion of all other employees. This doesn't mean that if it passes, any particular hotel has to ask for this at all. It's merely an option to expand what presently exists. So I can't tell you the number of folks who are asking for this because we haven't even gone out and polled any. because we haven't even gone out and polled any of them about it. We've come as a committee to the board to let, as the member said, the townspeople vote on this to help solve a problem.
Right, I'm just trying to get an idea of the magnitude of the problem.
The problem exists.
Well, I know the problem exists, but I'm, at least based on the letter, there were 400 applicants a couple of years ago. And then there's another paragraph that says you're anticipating at least, it looks like a net number of 150 this year that you simply don't have any place to house.
Susan, if I could just clarify, the 400 number, so 400 is the number of J1s that we had back in 2019 that were documented here.
Pre-COVID, so that's a good number.
That is correct, yes. And so right now, I think, Kathy, I'm not sure if you did able to get the survey out to the planning board?
I didn't because I couldn't get it to print out with all the information.
Neither could we, so. But you might want to send them the link. So we did a survey. And I will be honest, we did not send it out to our entire membership. Who we sent it out to was those employers that we know have a housing concern.
Okay.
And some stayed anonymous, some were willing to share the name of their business. So Kathy does have those results. What we know right now is that approximately 150 beds short.
Okay, so that's a good number, too. That's a number that would be a summer of 2022 number. That at least 150 anticipated people would be coming to look to work and the town has got no place to house them.
Correct. And I do want, and just for other clarity, I have not gone out and asked any of the hotels if this was an interest of theirs. This is completely just knowing the background of the need and more from the restaurants and the retail businesses that we have seen hurt from the lack of employee housing over the years.
In the past, Mary, did a lot of motels set aside 15% of their rooms for their employees? They did not. They rented them to the public. Okay, so that adds to the problem that they're, okay. All right, so that gives me some idea of what the problem would be. And we talked about this last week, I think, in terms, just generally in terms of enforcement. How are these things, you have a couple of, under the draft legislation, a draft amendments, we talked about. Point number five says seasonal employee housing shall be used solely by the employees and shall not include family members and employees or other non-employees. How is someone going to enforce that? How is someone going to make sure that that does not happen? And if it is violated, what is the, what's the penalty? How do you enforce? There's always, generally, not just on this issue, but I think we talked last week, generally, there's an enforcement issue in my mind in the town of Yarmouth. We do not have the personnel, Mark does not have the personnel to effectively monitor a lot of the authorities that we've given him. And I'm always very reluctant to expand authorities if we don't. It's like one hand clapping. If you're going to tell him he can do it, we have to give him the wherewithal to do it. How does, how would, how is this going to be enforced?
And under the current bylaw, the 15% that will be for your own employees, we have to give Mark a map of the rooms that are laid out and the rooms that are used for that basis. And then generally, you know, as a hotelier, you have to keep track of who is in that room.
Do you anticipate that would be the role of the proctor? That they would, you don't want kids coming back from a party and bringing 10 more kids to sleep that night in the room because they're too drunk to drive home?
Right, you would have, you would have the proctor. The other thing is if you're operating, there's still 85% of the rooms that are going to be rented to stringent guests. You want to make sure they have a good experience.
No, I, I.
Kids are partying.
Right. No, no, I get, but still, there's still an issue. And I think at a town meeting, someone's going to ask that question. So how are you going to enforce it? And there is the answer. You've got the proctor on board and you have the leveling effect of having private sector guests, you know, two doors away from you. They're going to call the police and say, kids are partying. Okay, so that.
You know, from the hotel operation side, you have either a night desk clerk or you have a manager that's living on the property. So then somebody, in addition to the proctor, there's somebody else there that adds another level to that.
Okay. And then under the paragraph on seasonal employee, it says principally employed in Yarmouth for more than 24 hours a week. So there's a minimum requirement to 24 hours a week. They've got to work someplace in Yarmouth.
Correct.
That's not a lot.
It's, you find a lot of these, it depends on the job definition. But you know, a lot of the kids that are working at Dunkin' Donuts are working X hours in the morning, a lot of chambermaids.
Yeah, are you talking, when you say a week, are you talking a five-day week or a seven-day work week?
Generally, they would work, that would be a seven-day.
All right, because that's only three hours, that's only three hours.
Yeah, but a lot of them are working. Generally, they'd only be working five days out of the seven.
Okay, even that's only four hours a day. That they would, they would be committed at least to Yarmouth.
Well, they could, I'm sorry to interrupt, but having worked with a number of these employers, some of those employees could have another part-time job in Dennis or Barnstable.
Right, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out why, was 24 a number that was, that you divine from practice? Or you feel that's the way the kids work? They do a couple of part-time jobs, four hours a day, four hours a day?
That's what we based it on, to the member's point, is there are folks who work in Dennis for a second job, so to speak. We wanted them to have, and 24 is greater than 50% of 40 hours a week. So we figured that would make it principally working here in Yarmouth.
Again, that would be another issue of enforcement. How would you track that to make sure that they're meeting that requirement? With like a paycheck review or?
You could have a pay stub review or something like that. I mean, you know, look, that's really the way you would kind of go and enforce it.
Well, I would, I would hope so. But again, I know it sounds petty, but it's not because we're authorizing a use now that's going to allow revenue to be generated. And the town, you're asking the citizens to make a significant change in zoning, even though it's, there is a sunset provision in here. So I think that, I don't think any of these questions are petty. I think enforcement is the.
Yes, it was, no.
But you sort of gave me the eyeball, Jamie. So. So.
You know, I think in reality, you're probably going to have a relationship with the employer in the hotel.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is, the landscape is littered with unintended consequences. And something like this is loaded with unintended consequences, particularly since we're dealing with a macro issue of lack of enforcement and virtually anything the town does. So if I'm going to be supportive, and I want to be supportive because I do think it's a problem, but I like to be able, on the other hand, to talk to the citizens and say, we've done the best we can to make sure that this is not abused. And you all stand to benefit the most. I mean, if this doesn't work, it's the motel, you know, the restaurateurs, all the people doing business in Yarmouth that are going to suffer. So everyone should be making sure that the questions are asked and answered and it's done appropriately. What is your, what is your opinion of the sunset clause? Would you support that?
Not on this one, Susan.
Oh, that's right, that's the.
It's the next one.
Well, but I would ask that question. Would you support a sunset clause?
Meaning what?
Meaning, well, let's use the, we talked about the other night, having some language that gives the ability of the town either at the end of 24 months or two years to go back and maybe make adjustments that either help the situation, remedy abuses that we saw.
Is it an annual provision that the building inspector has to reissue it annually?
Yes, but that to me is not a sunset provision. Because that, because once you make this change, it's permanent in the, in the zoning. Well, I'm thinking, I'm talking about an opportunity at the end of a two-year period to go back and look at how well this zoning change has served your purposes as well as the citizens of Yarmouth. I mean, there's several ways you can word it. You can say at the end of two years, it's automatically null and void. Or it's automatically renewed unless there's an affirmative vote to make it null and void, or the other way around. It's null and void unless you affirmatively vote to support it again. That may go, that may help a lot of people that are concerned about making such a change based on future activities, you know, future needs. They may be, this may skyrocket from, you know, 150 kids this year to 500 next year. That's a, that's a big change. And maybe the owners would want the opportunity at the end of two years to go back and take a look at it and see if we should make some changes. Maybe Mark would want to make some changes, maybe the health department would. So what is, what's your opinion of, of at least considering a sunset provision?
My first answer on that, from 26 years of private law practice and municipal representation of two towns here on the Cape, would be I'm not certain that that isn't even a lawful provision under chapter 40A of the general laws to have a zoning bylaw that by its own terms comes to an expiration or is required to have a reaffirmation in the future. Secondly, every zoning bylaw is always subject to review at any subsequent town meeting. So that if the citizens of Yarmouth think this is unworkable, unnecessary, it's just somehow wrong, you go back to town meeting and you vote on that one at that time. So that's how you self-police as a town on any bylaw, whether it's zoning, whether it's, you name it, health regulation, et cetera. The citizenry at every town meeting has an opportunity through the number of signatures to put a petition on the warrant for reconsideration of anything.
The burden would be on the citizens to make the correction, either through the petition or the zoning board maybe coming forward and saying.
Not sure it's really a burden on the citizens.
It is a burden on the citizens.
I disagree.
To collect 5,000 signatures of.
35,000 signatures.
Whatever it is, whatever it is. Where the board.
Board could put it on its own, yeah.
So I guess, so, and you don't think initially even it might even be legal?
I have serious reservations that it's legal.
All right, so I guess would that apply also to the short-term rental sunset provision we're talking about? Or is that a different thing?
I don't think, well, town council doesn't think that it's illegal. I think this, these are two very different proposals.
I know, but they're both concept of self-policing and self-correcting.
I totally agree with Jamie. We self-correct the zoning bylaw almost every single town meeting and take and identify issues and problems and addresses. I think this is one particular case where there is a lot of already things in place. You have the building commissioner issuing the annual permit. You have the hotel owners who want to maintain a positive atmosphere for their other guests. You have other employers in the town who want their employees to behave so that they can continue to do this. This is one case where there's a lot of checks and balances, in my opinion, already in place for this. And again, not all motels or hotels are going to be interested in this. No one on, you know, South Shore Drive is going to be interested in this. The Hampton Inn is not going to be interested in this. So the number of rooms that you're talking about keeps getting lower and lower.
If I may jump in here.
Yes, certainly.
I think we're trying to find a problem right now where none exists. So I know, Susan, you just said, you know, what if these kids come back and decide to party late at night? Well, what if a regular hotel guest decides to bring some friends back and party late at night? So I think they're, to, you can't start foreseeing every eventuality like that. The police are going to be there to take care of that. If something happens to the proctor, if you can't get under control, calls the police, the police come down and they handle it, just like it happens. It's, that's just the nature of it.
You actually have more control over these kids than you do over the regular guest. That kid is here for the summer and if he loses residence and he loses a job, he's going to be off the Cape. Whereas somebody that comes for three nights, you know, they had to enjoy themselves. So I think you actually have more control over the kids.
So right now, you'd be looking about 100, you're looking for generally about 150 rooms anticipating for the summer of.
Beds.
Beds, sorry, beds for summer of 2022. What happens if you don't get them?
That's a bigger problem. Then, then again, I don't have the answer to that. That's going to be each independent business having to try to figure out how to solve that problem. And the impact, as I tried to say before, is going to be extremely difficult because what it really does is it diminishes the level of service that we here in Yarmouth can provide to folks who we rely on for those number of weeks to come here all summer. And if they can find a better experience at a hotel that can serve their guests in Dennis or Barnstable, folks are not, you know, they'll go to a place that provides them the better service and never go back to the other place. So you've then lost that person, whether it's a restaurant, a retail store. If you can't accommodate those folks, we're all in trouble.
Generally, what is the discounted rate that they offer to these employees? They're not, they're not paying the rack rate.
Right now, right now, the way it works is it's you as the motel operator deciding what you may want, may want to backcharge your own employee.
Okay, so it's strictly the motel operator can do whatever.
It's negotiable.
Generally, the rates kids are paying if they're staying in a hotel that allows them right now is about 200, for two people, $240 up to $300 a week. So it's a substantially discounted rate from what the hotel can get.
For a room, Jack, or per person?
Per person, per room.
Per room.
And then, and they divide, say there are two kids in them, they divide that by two.
It's usually $120 to $150 a kid.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Liz.
That's actually my, a beautiful segue into what I was wanting to ask is, how do we guarantee if one of the issues that we're hearing is that affordable housing is an issue for these workers to find, then how do we know that there are precautions like that in place? I don't see anything in the zoning or any type of word saying affordable housing. I just see seasonal workforce. And so I don't see a guarantee. So can you help us or me on that in clarifying? If there's any suggestions that we should add into this or consider that if it is 15% of their housing, of their rooms goes towards seasonal workforce, then there should be some guarantee that it is affordable and not based upon, actually, I don't think, the motel owner. Because I think you two have conflicts of interest on this component of discussion. If I'm not mistaken, you two work for or own properties yourselves. So I would really like to guarantee that these workers actually are enticed by affordable housing that will allow them to stay and then work in Yarmouth. Thank you.
If I may, to clarify, what I think Liz is going at is that the employee of, that is not an employee of the hotel wouldn't get stuck with some kind of a usury rate that they would be taken advantage of because they are not a, they don't have the privilege of working at the hotel or motel. I think that's what her question is, what kinds of protections might be?
In general, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I agree with that. And then also just in general, you know, I also have heard directly from workers that they work, 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 and they send as much money as they can. But the reason why they cram into those little spaces is because housing is really, really cramped. Like, we've, I used to work in Province Town, and I'm sure, Jamie, you remember me in Province Town. And we had, you know, lots and lots, 20-plus bunk beds stuffed in a room. And because they couldn't afford a housing and they were sending all their money home, and it was really, really a horrible situation for these people. And I don't think that's something that we want to encourage or permit in this community, that this is something that we tolerate as a community. So that we want to make sure that these people are getting adequate housing at a very affordable rate, that they can save some money, that they can work towards actually going to the next level and know that they are taken care of in our community.
Madam Chair.
I'd like to get an answer first, Mr. Goodwin, hold on.
So a couple of points that were raised there, and I'll address some of them. In terms of the adequacy, I agree wholeheartedly that in Province Town, there was a problem of dormitory-style living where, like my college example, four people on the lease, 10 people in the place, and it was tough because they just crammed a bunch of people. And here, you have an existing motel room. So if it's got two beds and can house two people in it, your number's two. And again, it goes back to the self-policing of all of this stuff. You're going to know who's staying in your room. Secondly, what we're envisioning in many respects is not a direct economic exchange between employee and motel operator, but two business operators engaged in a discussion. Restaurant owner needs 10 beds. Restaurant owner goes to hotel and says, I need 10 beds. They negotiate the terms between the hotel and the retailer so you're not getting usury charges submitted to the employee. The employee and their employer then negotiate what rate it is for that housing. And again, it's a balance where you have to work out to make sure that you're paying them wages sufficient for them to want to be able to afford where they're staying.[1760.94] They're not going to take the job if 120% of their wages has to go to where they're going to live. So again, it almost creates affordability based on what you're paying them. And I'm thinking this transaction is going to be more business-to-business than employee to hotel operator.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was, I was going to almost echo what Jamie was saying. I foresee this as, you know, Brad Goodwin, owner of the Goodwin Pancake House, going to some, one of these in or motel holders bidding on 10, 10 rooms and then making it part of their package to get them there. I know Cape Cod Healthcare does that to a small degree and bids rooms so their new doctors or interns or RNs have a place to stay for X number of weeks or months until they get on their feet. The one thing I'd like to bring up, Madam Chair, if you could, could we hear from the public? And see if any of the people on, on this, on this call want to say anything before we delve deeper and deeper into this?
I was, I was going there, thank you for that. I honestly can't see if.
Oh, no, no one, if, I guess.
We have one, Mr. Nicconello seems to have his hand up.
Hand raised.
Okay.
You can see that.
Ben, can you let him, can you let, as the host, can you let him in, please?
There he is. And you're on mute, Tom. There you go.
Good evening, Tom.
Yes, good evening, Tom Nicconello. How are you? So happy new year to you all, having seen you all this year, which is great. Thank you for taking your volunteer time and, and spending it on this very important topic here in Yarmouth. As you know, our business's commercial rate has dropped dramatically. And we're looking to hopefully get some relief to expand our commercial tax rate, which then helps everyone. You know, most of these kids that come here today are, you know, overseas kids or kids that are across the bridge. And it's a good experience for these young people to come here and see what we have to offer, which they come back later on when they have families, right? I mean, that's what usually happens, generation, generation. And, you know, they're going to be working here and we're going to welcome them into our community. And they're not here all year round. This is just from, you know, early, late spring to early fall, which is when we blossom to 25,000, you know, during the normal time to almost 100,000 people. And having a couple of restaurants myself over the summertime and visiting a lot of our businesses, I think everyone saw the omission of workers. And one of those reasons why is we don't have too many young people here on the Cape. As Mr. Viera said, our chairman on this committee, there's just a lot of retired folks and they don't really want to pull a rake or wear a backpack lower, right? You can't blame them. So until we kind of have a balance in our generations, we're always going to have this trouble. You know, when I was growing up, right here on 28 in the 70s, it was a little different. We had good, young people here, living here. And that now that demographics have changed, the people that live here don't, you know, they bring their grandkids down and go to the water park, which is great, we like that. But we have to fill the balance. So this isn't for people that are going to stay here forever, but it is welcoming them here to see what we have to offer in our community. And maybe in the future, they come back and they, and they purchase a house because they like what they saw on Cape Cod. And I, I think it's a win for everyone, not just the businesses. But if I can't service my residents and my tourists, I'm not doing justice for anybody. So the businesses win, the residents win, and the tourists win. Right? There's nothing bothers me more when you try to go to Dunkin' Donuts at 5 o'clock and they're not open because they have no staff. Or they close down. And part of this problem, as we see in, you know, over the last 10 years anyways, even longer than that, is the housing problem. We can't get people to work if, you know, they're not going to drive from Plymouth to come down here to work. They want to stay on Cape Cod. And the way our zoning is, and we're realizing it every day, it just doesn't work for the way our economy works. So we have to have flexibility. Now, this is a great proposal that these people on the committee came forward with. It's something that's not long-term. This is something for April 2022. It's a little relief for the summer that we're going to be having, you know, 2 million people here in a matter of weeks. And I want to serve as many people as I can so they can say they had a great time on Cape Cod and they're going to come back generation after generation, just like we all do. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
And lack of help that they need. And we, I actually miss the, the expats, so to speak, coming, you know? They, we had a lot of them from where? From Ireland, right? And we used to see them riding their bikes to work and so on and so forth. And most of them are very good kids. And speaking also as a parent, I mean, you guys haven't addressed the parent part of it. As a parent, I've sent my children to other countries to, to learn and to work and so on and so forth. And we're concerned as well. So we have an idea of what our kids are doing. So I know you were talking about trafficking them or whatever, not tried, I didn't mean that trafficking. Take that out, delete, delete. But watching over them, as parents, we check in and say, hey, how's it going? What's going on? And so on and so forth. So I totally support this. This will be a really great thing for the town of Yarmouth, and I believe is needed. So thank you. No, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I just ask one clarification?
Yes, you may.
Is this just for the summer of 2022 or this is a permanent change?
It's a change until it's not.
Okay, so, so even though Tom said this is, this is just for, this is a permanent change in zoning? Okay. He's been short-term for this summer.
It is seasonal, yeah. It would start, if passed, it would start this summer. And if it was then rescinded or revoked or changed, that's how it would end.
Any other questions from any board members?
Can I, there seems to be some chat. Is that something, maybe someone who can see the chat, Brad, or is there nothing?
Looks like.
Brad, can you see?
I don't see anything in the chat except instructions from the visitor host encouraging you guys to speak up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no other members of the public. I did have a couple of questions myself. Most of them have been, have been answered. I'm glad to hear that the chamber survey, Mary, will get the link and we can look at it ourselves. I appreciate that. The, the, the handling of seasonal housing provisions by other towns, as Mr. Goodwin had asked, I'm not sure what we have on record. Kathy, was that something we can look at quickly? How others have it on the books now for seasonal housing? I know, you read about Palom House over in Dennis and what they did. And I believe that was the lodging that you may have referenced. But it'd be interesting, just get smarter about what other towns on the Cape are.
I can send out an inquiry to our planner list and see what, what people.
Yeah, or perhaps the chamber might reach out to its sister and brother chambers and see what information they might have. I'd appreciate that. I did have, I think we answered the question on 24-hour work week, how that came about. And that most kids probably work three times that number of hours when they're here. And they're not all kids. Some of the, the Visa employees come and work much more than that. So, but I did have a, a question with regard to a possible discussion on the language that is currently in it refers to principally employed in Yarmouth. What about principally employed by a Yarmouth employer? Not, not working in Yarmouth? So the Davenport Companies, I'm sure, has, I'm not sure if these, these types of seasonal workers are ones that you have. But so you're, a Yarmouth business owner has employees in another town. We wouldn't want, or would we want to not offer them this? Or would we in any way want to restrict that? Was the, the idea that it's for the, it's for the employees who are working in town and helping our town?
That was the gist of it.
Okay, okay.
You know, to your point, it seemed to be somewhat unfair to other Yarmouth businesses that for your example, we hired somebody because we're principally housed in Yarmouth and we utilized this bylaw, but we had to work in Dennis. It just seemed to be counterproductive to the problem we're trying to solve for Yarmouth. So we just kind of put in, if you, you, the employee are principally employed in Yarmouth, which goes back to the point of where we think this is going to be Yarmouth business to Yarmouth business working this type of arrangement predominantly.
But, I'm glad to hear that, that's the intent. And, and going back to one of the questions I believe Susan had with regard to enforcement and proof, someone shows their, shows their pay slip and the address of their employer is Dennis.
Problem.
Yeah. Even, even though they were, they may be working in Yarmouth.
Well, again.
Again, I'd say it's a very minor point, but I'm trying to make sure we, we're not closing any doors, that we're opening as many doors as you think the intent of this is and that it accomplishes what you, what you most, what you most want and think will work.
And I think that's why we went with principally employed in Yarmouth, not for a Yarmouth business or a Yarmouth business. Because you could have a corporation that's established in Boston and operates a restaurant in Yarmouth and your paycheck comes from Boston and, and that would be self-defeating. So I think there's a way that Yarmouth businesses will be sure that their employees are the ones that are going to be prevailing and taking advantage of this.
Okay, great. I think that, that intent is, is, is important. And then the only other question I had was with regard to the, again, the, it's part of the definition. I mean, we're really talking about this housing is a room. It's a room in a hotel. So there's the, there's the housing, the room in the hotel. And then there's the seasonal employee. And we kind of conflated the definition of those two things together into one definition. I'm wondering if, if it would be helpful or not to have a definition of seasonal employee housing and separate it from the definition of a seasonal employee.
The existing definition is entitled seasonal employee housing at hotels, hotels. I didn't want to overcomplicate this.
Yeah, that's my, that's really my question.
Yeah, and so I thought that by taking off the, the, really the principal change of the definition was taking out the word his or her employees so that you could expand it to other people's employees. And, and that's really what we were driving at. It becomes a little tricky to, you start overdefining what constitutes an employee or non-constitutes a seasonal employee. And I wanted to kind of shy away from that.
Yep.
It's almost self-defining based on the time limit of April 1st to October 31st in some respect. So trying to keep it simple to remember our Grove's point of keeping this easy for businesses to work with, both the motel and the other people that are there that want to avail themselves of this. I, I like to keep things as simple as you can in zoning. It gets complicated, but I, I thought by doing it this way, we will address that problem.
It, it is the curse of zoning that if it isn't stated specifically, it doesn't exist. And that, we, we, we know for the next amendment that we're going to be talking about that, that, that is one of the curses that we live with, when zoning bylaws are silent. But on this one, I, I just wanted to check to see this language. Obviously, I, I know Kathy took some time to put this all together, but this appropriately captures the intent and what would work best for you. Okay. Any other, question, Susan?
Number seven says the employee shall have access to cooking facilities. It doesn't necessarily mean in that room. It can be any place on the, any place in the motel.
Correct, okay.
Okay. And they don't have to use them, they just have to have access to them.
Correct.
They might eat at the restaurant or whatever, they don't have to, okay. Each room does not necessarily have to have all that in it, it can just be a bed.
Correct.
Okay.
Generally, the hotel rooms kind of have cooking facilities.
I was just going to say, yeah.
Okay, so I think what I'd like to do is, I think, unless there are any further questions by anyone, what I'd like to do is, is ask planning board members to look carefully at the language that's been submitted tonight for us. And at our next meeting, I'd like to propose that we, that we consider getting this ball rolling for a special town meeting. If I have a consensus from the board.
Annual town meeting?
I'm sorry, annual town meeting, please. I was hearing no objection to that. So that will be our, yes, yes.
Two members asked for feedback from Chief Fredrickson.
Yes.
Would you like us to initiate that feedback? Or would someone on the, on your board, or would you like the planner to do it?
I'd be happy to do it.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great. So you can report out on us when we discuss it next, in two weeks. Anything else that we can, we can help you with on this? So we'll, we'll, we'll place this on our agenda for our next meeting and hopefully we'll move this along as quickly as we can. I think it's, I think the self-regulatory aspect of this is, is really quite an incentive that it, it's a win-win for all of the parties to behave. And as a, as a, as an aunt of a, of, of a young fellow who got himself into a little bit of a sticky wicket at a caddy camp and got kicked out, that won't ever happen again to him. So hopefully this, this formula is one that will, will be successful. Yes, Building Commissioner Mark Grills.
Yes, hi. When there are issues at hotels, I'm regularly reached out to by several of the police officers that let me know that there's a violation. And I usually make a phone call to the hotel owner first to find out what the status is and what's going on. And then if things don't get cleared up in a reasonable amount of time, then we start the violation process. So the police do notify us when there's issues.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Yes, Mary, Villa Bonn Chamber Director.
I also wanted to let you know, and Kathy, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but the police department have a program where they work with the hotels directly in regards to if there is an incident at a hotel. That was, I think they put that in place like in 2018. It was really to build a good relationship with the general manager. So you might want to just mention that to Chief Fredrickson. I'm not sure how accurate the program is. And the other thing is, Madam Chair, I will reach out to the other chamber directors and see what information I can get on how their towns are addressing seasonal workforce.
I, I think as we go forward, well, obviously, it, I have a sense from the board that most of us are in agreement on the, on the positive aspects of this. But as you know, as we move forward with public hearings and at annual town meeting, we need to be prepared with the best research and information to cover this subject as well as we can. So I would appreciate that, Mary. And I would like to thank you all for coming. We really appreciate the time to come out tonight and the effort that you put together to form this committee and to, and to be looking out for the best interest of Yarmouth. We really, we really do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just one more.
One more, one more.
I just do want to extend our appreciation to Kathy and to Mark for their input on presenting this to you, to this, this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mary. Next on our agenda, short-term rentals. Kathy sent out this afternoon, and I, I'm sorry for the delay, partly due to my review later in the day of a draft number two with regard to short-term rental provisions. At our last meeting, we began deliberations on this. And I think it's important we continue to consider a preparation of a zoning bylaw that would really codify. that would really codify as a longstanding accessory use that simply is not defined by current bylaws. Last week, we heard from the Building Commissioner Mark Grilles, as well as the head of the Health Department, Mr. Murphy. We also know that Kathy's been in, in close contact with the town administrator on support for this. And so we want to just continue our discussions on this. And any comments we might have on this second draft? We also have a note from Susan that we all received with regard to this. And at some point when we get to you, Susan, we can, we can review that.
That was a newsletter I sent out to my association. That's, that's all.
Okay, yeah, it was really.
Summarizing what we talked about last week.
Yeah. I didn't know if anything else had, had come through on that. So I'd like to just open up for discussion the second draft that we have in front of us dated today. Any comments?
Kathy, can I just ask, if the new, one of the new sentences is all STI shall be transient and not rented to the same occupant month to month. Why, why are we doing that? Why are we not saying?
That was based on Mary Wagen's comment where she was concerned instead of someone renting out their property in an annual lease where the tenant has certain rights, they would just continue to lease through Airbnb and not have those same protections.
Any other, any other questions from board members? Concerns? Language changes, adjustments?
I need, I have to beg time because I have not had a chance to read it. So.
Maybe if I can just talk very briefly.
Yeah, certainly.
Some of the edits that were made, we're trying to incorporate some of the comments from the board from, from last time. So in the applicability rented to an occupant or occupants, and we took out that sub-occupant, even though that's in Mass General Law 64G, they don't define what it is. And I agree with you, it kind of creates some confusion. And I think Liz was concerned about the one to 31 consecutive days being like once per calendar year. So we tried to add in consecutive days at a time to try and get the idea that it's, it's more than, than once. And again, that, that last sentence there about transient nature, not rented month to month, was tried to address people not renting out Airbnb as their permanent housing from, from a month to month basis. Talking about trash removal, I think Brad had, had indicated it should be and at a minimum once a week versus or. I think everyone agreed to not allow parking in lawns anywhere. So that was, that was taken out. There's also a comment about the concern that restricting no commercial ventures, whereas short-term rentals may by their nature be considered commercial ventures. So we took that out because we had other clarifying comments there about the types of events that would not be permitted. I did try and take a look at Liz's comment with regard to unreasonably interfere with a person's enjoyment. And I tried to take a look at how we addressed it elsewhere in the zoning with regards to like food trucks. And also there is a standard legal term of a reasonable person, that general everyday person. How would they interpret these things? So I tried to incorporate that. And Liz had mentioned maybe, maybe mentioned something about pets and maybe just referencing that they need, bringing it to the attention of people that they need to adhere to all of our state and local regulations regarding pets. Because we do have a leash law and we do have a waste pickup law. So be sure that people are doing that. And then incorporating that sunset clause in there. I gave it through two years, but gave us the fall special town meeting just in case. So we go through that summer in case we wanted to, to make changes. So not a lot of tweaking, but I think I tried to address the comments that I heard from the board at the last meeting.
We're not ruling out family weddings, are we Kathy?
It, it does say limited, yeah, no events.
So like you can't have a family wedding in your yard anymore?
No, if you own your own home, you can. But if you're renting it out to somebody, you don't, they won't, I want you renting it out to a wedding party. You'd have a wedding at that, at that house.
And if you had a small intimate family wedding, nobody would ever know. Because that's not the point. I mean, it, it's really about people coming and having the 30 guests and telling them they can park at Inglewood Beach parking lot. Those types of things we're, we're trying to avoid.
Okay. And then one more time, why can this have a sunset clause and the other one count?
I haven't asked town council about the other one. I think trying to, this is its own separate section. So obviously it's easy to say this section will have a sunset clause. The other one, there's already provisions that are allowed in the existing bylaw. So that's the sunset clause would only be for a portion of it. I do agree with, with Jamie that if people find that it's a problem, that you come back and you can make a change. The thing with the short-term rentals is this is a bigger issue. It's a much bigger issue than what we're talking about.
Throughout the town.
Throughout the town.
Among other residents, it's not restricted to a motel that's on Route 28. This is interspersed throughout town. It affects everybody in town.
Exactly. So it's a bigger, it's a bigger impact.
I would argue that the 28th thing affects a woman in town too.
I disagree with that.
I knew you would, Chris. Simply because I said Route 28. Go ahead Kathy.
But what I'm saying is this is something that is a bigger, it does impact more. And we're doing this in a relatively short period of time. So I think it might give people more comfort to vote for this because this also has a significant monetary number associated with it, with the short-term rental income or excise tax. So we want to be sure that this is, this may be this, so we can explain it to people that this is, this is, this could be a short-term fix. But we want to be sure that we're maintaining our tax, getting the taxes for our wastewater initiative. But don't worry, we're still going to take another look at this. We still want to hear from you more about what's working and what's not working. And we will, we'll tweak it as we go along. I did talk to town council specifically about this. And, you know, does it automatically just go away? Or does it become a moot point after November 13th, 2024? And he basically says it stays in here unless you physically like have an amendment that takes it out. But it would be moot because the, the date would have expired. It's just more confusing for, for everyone looking at the bylaw, reading through going, oh, this is great. And then you realize at the very end, no, the sunset clause is already.
So it automatically expires November 13th, 2024 unless affirmative action is done prior to that.
That, that's given. I don't think we need, I don't think we need, yeah, I mean, I mean, all of this. And even the second sentence, we may not, that might be more in the explanation for people as to why we're doing the sunset clause to give us time to do more. It doesn't need to be in the bylaw per se.
So, but the town council thinks we definitely need the lead-in unless otherwise extended or modified or extended?
I, I copied that from something else and sent it to him. He didn't edit any specific language. I mean, we could.
I think it's important to keep that in there for the public. So that they understand.
But what does that mean?
It just doesn't disappear after two years, that it can stay. We just need to act on it.
You could extend it or you could change it and extend it.
All right, but.
Or remove it.
Do we have to mention here how we're going to extend it, modify or modify it? Or is that?
I can look at that language a little bit more closely.
It's through town meeting.
It's through town meeting.
That's how zoning is passed.
All right. So that, that would tie then to the November deadline.
So I, right. That's, I wanted to give us that fall town meeting in case we needed it. Because I, I want to be sure that you get the couple summers.
And maybe I would just clarify that, say unless otherwise extended or modified and extended at the November or the fall, however you want to word it, the fall town meeting.
I don't think you need to, you need to put the date in, the absolute date. Because we don't know when fall town meeting could be. We could also have a special town meeting.
I wouldn't put the absolute, I'd just say fall town meeting.
But we could have a special town meeting at any time. This is the date at midnight with which it goes away. I'm just saying I chose the date so that we could try to address it in a, in a standard fall town meeting. You don't want to say specifically when you're going to address it. I can guarantee town council won't like that.
Well, then I would argue, take the first paragraph, take the first line out.
Susan, it's just like our, our growth incentive zone that we just extended. It's, it's going, I think for eight years. And there's a date the commission gave to us and we accepted it and voted on it. You always want to do a bylaw with a set date. And then you hope you can pull its town meeting before or after it. And it's common sense. I think the way Kathy's got it has, is going to be just fine. And it's rare that we have a sunset clause. So this will be novel. So I congratulate the board and I congratulate Kathy for her work. But this is, you always want a set date.
And we have a set date.
There you go. But you don't want to say anything about the fall town meeting or the spring town meeting. Just it ends on November 38th at midnight, whatever. There you go.
Not the first paragraph, that sentence is unless otherwise extended.
I, I think if, if I may.
I see what you're saying, just the first, and then so section blank, short-term rental shall expire. And it's terms.
We always have the ability to extend it or whatever.
I get it. I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
I wasn't explaining myself.
And, and that, that clause in particular, I think will have the fingerprints of town council all over it.
Anyway.
Anyway.
He didn't have any, I asked him specifically if he had any specific comments on the wording and, and he really didn't. He, we did talk very briefly also about setting a maximum number. And I think that the board really agreed last meeting that they didn't want to do that. But just for future reference, he really felt that that's something that should be done through a general bylaw and not something done through zoning bylaw. So if we think about that in the future, just keep that in mind. I mean, this needs more work. I mean, if you guys are, are, are good with that. I mean, obviously we would probably have a, a general purpose. And, you know, we would turn this into a full and then would show you on the use table where we would get changed and we'd have to add a note. And I can move forward with that if that's something that you're, you're interested in doing.
So on that, with that question, any, Liz, you have a question?
Um, just to be clear. So going back to that date of November, what is it? November 13th of 2024 at midnight? That means at 11:59 on November 12th is the last minute. That, that is an active bylaw, correct?
Unless otherwise.
Not the day of November 13th, then it expires at the end of that day. So the way that like ABCC liquor licenses is 11:59 on December 31st is when it expires. That's it. And it is very clear, not midnight. It is the last minute of the very last day. So I just want to be clear that it's, that, that, that there's no ambiguity and no questioning with staff when 11/12, the November 12th date comes and they're like, oh my God, it's expiring tonight, not tomorrow. We don't have an extra day. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear on that, that it's November 13th. Actually, it's done. It's not even there anymore. So then the other thing I just wanted, and I noted, and I recognized it in the last, during the seasonal housing, and then I'm recognizing it a little bit here also. There is some overlap and I just cautioned the board that in the future, or even for Kathy in the future, that we don't get too deep in the weeds as far as the operations, expectations and standards for how Mark is going to enforce it later on. That is where, when it's in zoning, then it becomes complicated that we have to go back and amend it and through a town meeting. So if you just apply the use of it, then we're good, we're allowing it. And then there's more flexibility for the staff to go in and amend it and tweak it based upon committee review or the selectmen when it's a procedure or that this through the town administrator or through health regulations and public hearing processes. So it doesn't require town meeting vote. And then we're bound to two different town meetings if we even decide on town meetings, two town meetings. Some years we only have one and we have one crack at it to amend the rules and regulations when it gets too deep. So I really want to make sure that we don't get too nitty gritty with the details on how it's supposed to be operated and how all of this, when it really should be an actual procedure or a rule and regulation that's attached to the allowed use on the property. Thank you.
Yes, Kathy.
I guess my, my only comment on that would be if, if you want something to be enforced, it needs to be written down in the zoning bylaw so you know what provisions that you're acquiring if you want Mark to, to govern it versus if you have something outside of it. Who, who's the policymaker, the Board of Health or the Board of Selectmen now have to make a policy on the?
Well, we did, we did that Kathy, just with the, the food trucks on town property. We're, we're allowing the use to happen and then the selectmen set the policy on how the appropriate uses. So the same thing with Board of Health, they have standards of operation that they expect. So, you know, and then it's Bruce and it's identified in the actual general code of which regulations in zoning that they can enforce. So it doesn't have to be reliant upon just Mark. So, but that's up to you guys to figure out what you want to do. But I just, I really don't want to be bound just to two town meetings every time. I, I don't think that you as a staff deserve that. I think we should have a little bit more flexibility in a public hearing process rather than that two public hearings and then go to town meeting or then the selectmen and this and that. And then hope to God that we can change just one little sentence because it's preventing you guys from actually doing the job that you've identified as an issue. So I just really want to make sure that we, we create that flexibility and that we're not bounding you to these two zoning, these two considerations that we're really binding to zoning. So I, I really, we should be a little bit more creative in our thought process. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of this. I wanted to move forward. I think both of them are great. I think that they're fabulous. We should really do it. I just want to make sure that we are setting you guys up for success in the future when 11:59 on November 13th or November 12th. And we haven't like, we haven't heard you from being creative and solving a problem yourselves through a smaller, a smaller process, not such a large process. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Waiting for Kathy to stop writing. And no, no, that's okay. I didn't want to, I just interrupted you, which I didn't want to do. Any other comments that we would like to forward to Kathy as she will move this forward? I'm getting the sense from the board.
Madam Chair, just a quick one. I just would like to thank Kathy for the one in 365 chance that she picked my birthday for, in 2024, for this to end. So thanks Kathy. I look forward to celebrating.
So I, I, I'm, I'm hearing, hearing no objection. We'll have asked Kathy to move forward with all of the other work that needs to be done to make this become an amendment.
Put it into a zoning format.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it kind of like you'll see all the changes and I'll put it in a section. We usually have the first drafts that way. And then once you get to a certain point, then I'll put it into the language for a warrant article.
Okay. Okay. Good enough. Great. All right. Next on our agenda is our annual report to the Board of, annual report that's included, our report that's contained in the Town of Yarmouth annual report. There is a, a draft that was in our package, a three-page draft. Any comments, suggested changes, edits on this particular document? Hearing none. Kathy, I'd go forward with this as our submission for the, the annual report. DRI Blue Sky Towers is next on our agenda. On Monday evening, Kathy, Brad and I attended the Cape Cod Commission hearing on the DRI submitted by Blue Sky Towers and provided remarks on a draft decision that Kathy sent out a note that night, was approved by their committee, a draft four to one. The hearing is still open and is continuing until January 13th, where it will be placed in front of the full Cape Cod Commission, I believe. Kathy, why don't you give us a, a review on that?
I think Mark Forrest, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, has asked if the commission would be considering to extend that out to allow our newly appointed Cape Cod Commission representative to come up to speed on it. I believe Chrissy Sanatore did indicate that they would try to move that, that hearing. I'm not sure they can do it because they're statutorily required to close the hearing within 90 days of opening the hearing and they opened it on the 15th. She may not have been fully aware of all of that. So long story short, it may be on the 13th or it may be getting extended to allow our Cape Cod Commission rep time to come up to speed. Out of the presses.
Yes, thank you for that Kathy. So this is continuing until January 13th. And I will, I will be submitting. And I will, I will be submitting a copy of my remarks that I prepared, that I read at the hearing. And I, I will just share with you one, one concern. We, I implored the, the subcommittee to change one word, just one word. From May to will. It went to a vote and they voted no. And it was with regard to their declaration of the detriment, a single sentence in the report, two sentences, that said that the tower may have a visual impact on Route 28. And I specifically asked them to change it to will, and even stronger than that, will have a negative visual impact. I, I can't think of a more factual statement. They said no. So I intend to go back to the full commission on the 13th, if I can, and ask again for at least that one word change. And how, how that works out, we'll see. But I, I, I can't tell you my disappointment in that not being the most obvious, easy thing to give us was changing one word and they chose not to. So that's all I have. Kathy, if you wanted to add anything, Brad, you did well.
Kathy, do you want to say something before I?
No, go ahead, Brad.
I, I don't have a problem really with the, the word change. It's just some people find Tommy the Elephant attractive. I find Tommy the Elephant a negative impact on Route 28. So how we can have the commission state that something will have a negative impact to the entire community? I don't know what's in the beauty in the eye of the holder. I mean, Lord knows, I've walked out of a dressing room and my bride has looked at me and said, you've got to be kidding me. And I thought I looked great. And I said, I'm sorry. And I went right back in and put on what she suggested. So it's, it's, I hate to get into visual acuities of what the human being would thinks is nice or not nice. And just to remind the board, I think the reason that John Harris voted the way he did, excuse me, Commissioner Harris voted the way he did and the other members did too, is because it still has to go through our zoning board of appeals. And they basically said, this applicant has checked all the boxes, so you can go ahead. If Yarmouth still wants to reject it, they can. It's sort of like he, they submitted a recipe for a cake. They made the cake. It's a cake. If Yarmouth wants to eat it, that's up to Yarmouth. So that's why I think it's, it's getting pushed through. So I think if you have a real problem with this, you just go appear before the Z B A and say, look, this is why you should reject it. And as you know, getting through the Z B A is four out of five. It's a super majority. It's not a simple majority like the commission. So, um, thank you, Madam Chair, for, for the right to speak.
I do think that your comment was totally in keeping with the concerns that we had addressed about design and design slash visual impact on 28. So I think it was completely appropriate. Too bad they didn't see it that way, but that has always been the concern of this board was matching the necessity of having it there and the negative impact of how that was going to look there. And could they do something about it? And even modest recommendations that we made were turned down as modest as changing May to will. So I applaud you for doing it. It's, you know, the nature of bureaucracy, but it, it was, I, I think you've ably represented the concerns this board has always had about how that was going to look on 28. We sort of had to accept the location because there wasn't much else to do. But we fought for design changes that were basically, and, and ignored.
Yeah, again, again, I, I don't want to belabor this. My only, my only point in, in raising this with the subcommittee was that it, the document is a decision based on facts. How is that not factual? And that was my point. And I, I will continue to push that point. Because it talks simply about the project may have visual impacts along the Route 28 corridor. That's, that's what it's, that's, that's what they say is the fact. May have a visual, all I'm suggesting is that it will have a visual impact.
How could it not?
Whether it's negative or however you want to interpret, big fat elephants or towers, I don't care. It's going to have a visual impact.
I think I agree 100%. I think actually if we're the ones who are coming up with the grand picture, this is our community. And if we're the ones that are saying that it's going to have, I mean, Brad, I'm going to go with your analogy here. If we're telling the husband that that outfit is not matching with what we have envisioned, then we're going to make that husband go back and get a new tie, different shoes, different this, because it's not going with the planned outfit that we have that we're attending a wedding. So I'm sorry, the Cape Cod Commission, this is exactly what we're saying. We're the wife, we're telling the, the tower that they're the husband and they're not having the right outfit that we have envisioned for the, for the event. So I agree 100%. I think it's really, I, I, I'm just, I am very disappointed in the Cape Cod Commission. I'm not surprised. I'm just disappointed that they did not listen to us and take the, the representatives of our planning board, of our town's planning board and actually consider it and just, yeah, it's just, it's disappointing. So thank you.
Okay, moving on. What's next on our agenda here?
Meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes, which we don't have right.
I finished them. I just didn't want to give them to you too late.
We will, we will, we will wait on that. No worry. Zoning Board of Appeals, any, anything there Kathy, I haven't seen anything recently or did you send?
The Z B A agenda out today. Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay.
And, and the con.
Okay, great. Any committee updates since we last met last week? I have, yes, Liz?
Yes, I attended the CPC earlier today at four o'clock. And, and so you'll be happy to know that the CPC voted for actually putting a full 10% of their revenues into Affordable Housing Trust, not just 10% minus whatever we take out for administrative costs. So a full 10% plus administrative costs. So it is over $200,000 that is going towards Affordable Housing Trust, which is excellent. And that actually was one of my suggestions. So I'm very happy with that win. Also, we voted in favor to approve funding for the Bass River Estuary, the proposal from the Friends of the Bass River. Also for restorations and historic preservation and documentation of the ancient cemetery stones. So it is a really cool thing and it's going to be online, a database. And so those are things that are really wonderful and preserving of our, our culture and our legacy of our community. So, so that's our update for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee updates?
Just want to say the Design Review Committee is going to be meeting on the 18th. I haven't heard. And when we have a couple, a couple of projects that we're looking at, one of them will be some minor modifications to the Senior Assisted Living at the Irish Village. They have a few minor changes that they'd like to do. So we need to go through the Design Review Committee before it comes back to you guys for V C O D site plan review.
I'm sorry Kathy, was this the, the part of the, the construction that they were just approved for?
Yes, I mean, they've been before us many times. They just keep changing the plans a little bit and tweaking here and there. And they had some changes mainly to the front entrance. And then also related to the coop, there were some cupolas on the, on there. So they're, they're preparing that application. You'll eventually see it, but it needs to go through Design Review Committee first. And then we also have a project at the J Mart for, which is a gas station convenience store and the property next to it, which has some small cottages on it to redevelop that. It would still be a convenience store, gas station with a drive-through and four apartments above. So that's something that's going through design review. With, with, that's at the, at the J Mart 1282, 1282 Route 28.
Yeah, right, right before the Ambassador Hotel.
Right.
With or without the used car?
Without.
Great, because they just approved the permission for used cars.
And we insisted they put up, didn't we?
And there are no used cars, there is no used car market, so there are no cars in their lot, I'm happy to say, since I live around the corner. But anyway, so that's, that's a, there's two lots there Kathy that are.
There's two lots, 1176 and 1182. 1176 has five small cottages, which are year-round rentals.
Are they going to do?
I don't think they incorporated that.
Are they going to do away with those little cottages?
Yes.
And build a bigger structure?
Build a bigger structure with a store on the first floor and top of shop housing. So it won't be something that comes before the planning board. They will need to go through Design Review for review, Site Plan Review Team, which is town staff. And then they will definitely need relief from the zoning board of appeals. And then the other one, which I haven't received the full review of, was for that warehouse on Mid Tech Drive. They're over 10,000 square feet, so they're checking with the commission to see if they have any jurisdictional issues with the D R I for, for that. And I haven't heard back from that. So we only had four applications or five applications last year and we're going to have three this month. So I hope that's not a precursor to what's coming because that's a lot of work.
Kathy, the drive-in site, we're meeting on Monday, correct?
Yes.
So we'll have a report the next time.
Okay. One, one board member item, I, I have is the vision plan, as we talked at our last meeting, has been sent on its way to the Board of Selectmen and we're waiting to hear when we might meet with them. But that is on their desk, their desks, and we'll be waiting to hear from them as to when we'll move forward on that.
They do have it in preparation for their goal setting this Saturday.
Yes.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I noticed on the select board, I guess they have at the end of their packet every two weeks, they have sort of a calendar and sort of a looking ahead section. And I think it's been on there for a while. Have you, have we seen any movement at all on the Matiche's reuse group? Because the reason I ask Madam Chair is because we're basically one year away from that school being empty. Because the projected move-in date is January 3rd or 4th of 2022. And I just wanted to know if Kathy or you have heard of, if this group is going to start to talk because the clock is ticking on that property as well as Wixon, although that is not our concern. Just thought I'd bring it up.
Thank you. I, I saw it on the, the, the future calendar as well. But it looked to me like they were looking to establish the committee. I don't think there is.
That's what I mean. I mean, but that, but that, that, the name of that group, Madam Chair, apologies for interrupting. That has been on that section of the select board looking ahead chart for several months and I have not heard a peep. Just wondering if that was.
No, nothing, nothing.
The same lack of peeps that you've heard or not heard?
Same lack.
Okay. Kathy, I assume that's the same from your perspective?
I know that way back, Pat Armstrong had been leading that charge.
Right.
Then it's been even longer than a few months and that's been sitting there and I think they.
I was trying to be charitable Kathy, but yes, it has been a while.
Start a charge. I'm afraid if I ask, it'll end up on my desk and I don't think I can handle it.
Well, then, then I withdraw my comments. But the truth is, we are 12 months away from that building being empty, period. And I hope there'll be some leadership about what we're going to do.
It certainly would save the town money if we were a little proactive. So we're not paying insurance for an empty building and that we could actually find some taxpayer use for that parcel if we're going to liquidate it in any capacity and land acquisition committee, all of that stuff. So I think, you know, it, yeah.
I mean, given, given, given the two zoning amendments that we discussed tonight, that site opens up so many different possibilities. It's just, I, I am puzzled by the lack of leadership.
It is zoned residential and it is in the zone two of our wells. So just to keep that in mind as we move forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Any other board member items? Correspondence or staff updates, one correspondent Kathy had sent to us again, the hearing on the Bass River Bridge. She'd sent out to us the D O T hearing is the 13th.
It's January 13th. It's virtually at 6:30. The link information is on the town website as a news item near the bottom. Same with the housing summit, just scheduled for the 11th at 5:00 P M. At the Senior Center. If you're interested in attending, you can R S V P to Mary Wagon and all that information is on, is on the town website.
Kathy, what is, what format is that? Is that Mary going to be explaining the various housing situations in Yarmouth? What is going to be the, because several people have asked me what, sort of what's going to happen there? What, what's the format?
There's going to actually be a presentation with regard to all of our housing needs, all analysis of, of where we kind of are. And then we're going to break out kind of like what we did for our workshops for, for the vision plan into separate little groups. And we're going to ask somewhat similar questions. I mean, Joanne came to the, to the prep meeting, you know, what are the challenges, you know? And then as we move forward, there'll also be, what are the goals that you think? So it's going to be very similar to what we did, but it'll be interesting to see what answers and how they differ because it's totally concentrated on housing. And then also, you know, like where in town would you be interested in having affordable housing? And you can identify the different locations. And so at the end, we'll have all the goals and then people will put their stickers up to see which ones are most important to them. And hopefully that will help inform some of the, the goals and also the action items for the updated housing production.
Production plan, right? Any, any other updates from you, Kath, or?
Those were the two.
Yeah, that's the same thing. Yep. Our next meeting is on the, on the 19th. I, I may or may not be available for that meeting. It's, it's kind of likely I won't be. So with that, Liz, do you have your hand raised? No. Just so you know, I, the, the 19th, our next meeting is probably going to be a problem for me. So I'm hoping you can, can attend and keep these.
I will, I will be remote. So, and I actually, I really do think that it is time for us to consider going remote for the safety of everyone. Schools are starting to, I know Suffolk University has just put on their classes for the next two weeks to go remote. So I really, I can, I'm, as Chairwoman, I, I hope that you would consider that. So, because it's just for safety reasons, just till we get over this hurdle, I, I want you to consider it, please.
Oh, absolutely. I think.
You mentioned that. Brad did mention that.
Yeah, Brad, Brad sent a note on that. I'm, I absolutely, I, Kathy and I talked this afternoon about this subject about maybe converting to all remote for the next several, however, while this difficult period of cases continues. So I'm, I'm more than glad to, to, to do that. We, we could have our next meeting remote.
So Madam Chair, I was going to just segue off what Liz said. Why don't we either make a motion or make a decision that we make the 19th a remote meeting since you may not be there? And then our, our vice chair will be not there, but present. So why don't we just signal to the public that we'll be remote on the 19th? And at the end of the 19th, we can make a decision whether we want to continue the next week or sunset ourselves, sunset clause on the 19th at 11:59 P M.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds reasonable. So we will, we will, we will, we will have our next meeting on the 19th. We will, we will have it remote.
And then determine.
It's kind of weak, a meeting to meeting, if that seems fair enough, meeting to meeting.
And Kathy, if you can just let us know if there are any scheduled public hearings that need to be advertised, that we need to make that decision sooner rather than later, so you can meet those advertisement requirements, that would be great.
Good point, Liz, thank you. Anything else?
Get vaccinated, soon you get vaccinated, soon we can all meet in person. About that.
Yep.
Vaccinated.
You don't want that.
Booster, you need the booster.
And boosted.
Anything else, uh, any board members would like to raise? Okay, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Take a roll call again. Liz?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Joanne, yes. Seeing no objections, the meeting is, the meeting is closed, thank you.
Good meeting, thank you, Madam Chair.